Yeah, so it's 6:06. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. We have to discuss the requirements for the new library director. So just, uh, so we're all on the same page. Because this is a special meeting, we are not able to add anything to the agenda. But I did wanna make sure that we at least discussed what we're requiring for a new library director, and then get to some of the compensation questions we've had up in the air. So, first of all, for the requirements for the new library director, so far, we had sort of set up a system of, what, like, three years and an L, an MLIS, in terms of work experience and educational requirements. I think we all agree that the right person is probably more important than either of those two specific requirements, although they are strong guidelines. But those, that being said, the kind of work we need our library director to do, especially in the next year or two, are not quite... I, I think we should really discuss what we're hoping to get out of that library director, so that when we do post and evaluate future candidates, we have that to consider. So Joy, I know that you sent an email to us talking about some of the requirements you'd like to see. Could you repeat that for the record?
Do you want me to read my email or elaborate on it?
Or, or, I mean, just highlight the, okay, the skills and so on?
Well, basically, I took off my library board hat and put on my employee, my employer hat.
Okay.
And I basically said, if this candidate was applying for a position in my company, would I hire her to be a manager of the employees that I have now? And I reread her work experience and I reread her cover letter. And nowhere on her cover letter does she state that she has managerial experience. Because I'm looking for somebody who can manage employees. We have about six to eight employees.
Right.
And they are full-time, so they would be managing six to eight employees every day. Nowhere on her cover letter does she say that she has any managerial experience, which is one of the qualifications that we wanted here.
Yeah.
Should we move into discussion to discuss?
We can.
Oh, yeah.
No.
Okay. But if we're discussing a certain person...
I think we should try not to draw too many specifics. But we're talking about qualifications we'd like to see.
Just wanna pretend people try to see.
Basically, I am reiterating what I said in my email. I was talking about her experience. Nowhere in her cover letter does she state that she has any managerial experience, which is one of the quotes that we wanted here. Also, she does state she has managerial experience in her resume, but she only supervised two library aides and two pages. I don't know if that's together separately or what, but in my eyes, it's not enough.
Okay.
I also said that I'm not sure where exactly we put the ad for a library director position opening, but I don't know if we did it where I look. I usually look at Indeed, Monster, ZipRecruiting, one of those large databases that's on the computer. And I did contact a friend of mine who happens to work in human resources, and she did give me some suggestions, one of which is something that I had stated in the earlier meeting that maybe advertising in the summer after the graduates have graduated would be inappropriate time. And she, she said that yes, that is probably the best time to find somebody who's looking for this type of position. And we actually need to have a couple candidates to choose from, a pool of candidates to choose the right one, because honestly, just having one candidate, in my eyes, is not enough. We need to have somebody who's going to be able to make the right choices for our library, whether it's going to be buying certain types of books, firing employees, or whatnot. And if we do hire this one person, we need to look beyond that. If, if there is a chance that we have to fire this person, it may be costly for us, whereby we may have to redo the candidate search and selection process. We may have to offer a separation package. There may be disenfranchised employees who don't like our decision that may also want to leave, thereby giving us another position, another position or possibly more positions to fill. And we also have to think about what are our employees are going to think? What are we doing for our community and also damage to our public image? We have to look at that. And another item that I was thinking about was, we're not hiring this person for us, for our good. We're hiring this person for the library. Who does the library work for? Our community. So we are technically spending our community's tax dollars. We need to also look at what's the best candidate for our community tax dollars to be applied for. And then, as for the compensation package request, nobody that I have hired personally has ever asked for three weeks vacation. They usually start at two weeks and they work their way up, putting hours into our company. And also, with what she's requesting, that is not what is in our, and I did print it out, it's somewhere here, in our employee handbook on the Google box.
Right.
What we stated in, in Mary Pax's email was what is in the Google box. If we give her more, we may have disgruntled employees again because they're saying, well, why is she getting this and I can't get this, and I've already been working here for X amount of years.
Yeah.
And the last thing I'm going to say is, we do not know what...
Jeez, I forgot how to do it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We don't know what the budget is for Connecticut coming in. This new director that's coming into this position may have to also work with a deficit in Connecticut budgets coming to our towns. So that's another factor that we have to put in when we're looking for a new director. And that being said, I guess, what I was just trying to get quite across my email.
Yeah. So, I, one thing, the, really, the only thing that you said that I want to question as a group is the question of whether it is possible to make the right decision for the town when we don't have many, many candidates to choose from. And my personal position is, you can still make a good decision even if there aren't many, many applicants. I, I don't necessarily believe that, that we need to create a package so, that's gonna be so tempting that we get tons of applicants before we find a person who is the right fit. I think especially because of the situation we're in, as a small town, a small library, even if you don't take any money or compensation into account, this is not going to be a, the kind of stepping stone major... I, I think a lot of librarians are not hoping to end up in Willington Public Library. I think they are working towards something else. So, I, I, because we are not the New York Public Library, because we're not even Mansfield or Hartford, we need to be realistic about who's going to be attracted to work here. It's not going to be the most ambitious people. It is not going to be people who, like a lively city atmosphere. It's not gonna be people who feel strongly about working with a large budget, right? We are, we, by the nature of being who we are, we have a limited pool of applicants before we even look at compensation at all. And my concern is that if we insist, if we put the expectation onto ourselves that we must see several applicants, then we may end up having to offer so much in terms of compensation and so on, that we cause other problems for ourselves or back ourselves into a corner that we can't get out of. And I don't wanna do that for the sake of having options. I would wanna do that for the sake of finding the right person. If we can't find the right person without doing that, then it makes sense to go down that road. If we feel like we can find the right person without doing all of that, then it probably makes sense to go with the right person, if possible.
But if we only have one option, I don't think that's a great idea either, to choose from.
So we did not have one option. We had three applicants. And one withdrew, withdrew their application. So, while that's not a ton, I think we did at least look at three resumes and three cover letters and interview a person. Is that, would I prefer to have more candidates? Absolutely. We all agree that the more you have, the better decision you can make. You're more informed, you have more options. My question is, what's realistic for us?
No, I get that, we're not gonna attract, um... Yeah, we're not gonna attract from a bigger pool because we just don't have the resources. But I don't, I feel like we're being kinda held over the bag because there's this one option, who wants all of these benefits?
Well, are we obligated, I mean, that's what she's asking.
Right.
Yeah, we are not obligated to, to, I believe this is the start of a negotiation, right?
As long as it's a start, I just don't feel, I feel that those, that request is very excessive.
And, and one of the reasons I, I had the agenda in this order is that I think the first question we have is, do we have a candidate we like? And the second question is, what can we offer? And I, I don't wanna put the cart before the horse and talk about whether we're offering the right stuff if, in the end, we don't have the right candidate at all, and we would wanna throw out the, the net again.
All right, so should we talk about like what we want to see in a director then? Like what requests do you want, can I start?
Well, Joy already started.
No, but I mean, can I add to that?
Yeah.
So I, just someone who's strong in day-to-day operational skills, you know, who can set up maintenance schedules and tech update schedules, because we're already behind in our tech updates. Things like that. I, we have to discuss with the board as far as like the day-to-day operations financially. Is that person gonna do payroll? Is that person gonna do all the bookkeeping? That's another conversation that I want to have, but we can focus on this, what else? Keeping, you know, the basic things like keeping the collection up to date and in response to the community's requests. I also would like to see that a bigger presence of the director. So here, maybe one evening a week, maybe one weekend a month, but especially during library events. That's something that we did have written up two years ago with previous directors and just kind of felt by the wayside, you know? I think the director should be there for events like the summer reading program kickoff and, you know, some holiday events, like special, especially fundraisers. The director should be there for laying out with friends, those fundraisers. I think that is a requirement, I don't think it's an option. And it has been treated as an optional presence in the past, and I, I don't think that's, I don't think it's asking a lot. You know, if it needs, well, they work Saturday in lieu of, you know, not working on Monday, that's fine. That's, that happens everywhere. I've had, I've had jobs like that, you know? But I think that's something that should be a requirement.
Okay.
I have one question. I know that she has worked for the library when it was done at Hall. Has she worked with present staff?
No, currently.
Okay. Good, now that makes my question null and void.
Okay, great. Another thing I would like to add to this list in terms of, maybe not required, but certainly desirable attributes of the right person, is a strong sense of data-driven decision-making. I know in our recent discussions about whether we renew a service or so on, we wanted, we've been asking questions like, is anyone using it?
Right, no, I think that, that, yeah, that we did talk about, that's important because I don't wanna be wasting money on things that people aren't using. Meanwhile, there's things that they would like that we don't have it on for. So to keep, to have that kind of tracking, non-personal, you know, just not...
And I believe we have the data. It's just a matter of somebody who's willing and interested in pursuing that data. And so, one word I wanna talk a little bit about is manager, because there's, I feel like, a pretty significant difference between managing people and managing projects. And I think that right now, our library needs to be very good at managing projects. We have, the, the state of our financials is such that we need to make sure that we are implementing the right things at the right times, that we are serving the community in the ways we need to serve them, and that when we do choose which improvements to be making, we're choosing that wisely. I think we are pretty lucky in having a staff that works hard even when we don't have an official library director. So I think, I, I wanna be clear that I am also interested in hearing about people's experience managing projects as well as managing people. I think we have a pretty good list here. Yeah.
Heather, when we were talking about managing operational, like, are you talking, because a concern for me too is the building. So, just... It's like building maintenance, you know, having a maintenance schedule, so that, you know... Huge concern. Yeah. So, I just wanna be sure.
And that would be...
I mean, it is something that, if someone sets up a calendar and manages that calendar of what needs to be done, when, and the frequency, you know, something, especially for things that aren't done in a frequent manner, that are done maybe every other year or two years, that that's somewhere written down, so that when it comes up, you know, we know the half side, know less. We were trying that with the tech schedule because that just wasn't there, and then working on getting that, you know? Things need to be updated, and that wasn't done anywhere, that kind of thing needs to be done.
And of course, after all that, the main, the biggest influence, one of the biggest influences a director has over libraries, the collection choices they make. So, I think sometimes as the board, we're focused on all of the other things that they're working on, but making sure that that person is the right, who has a pulse on, a finger on the pulse of the community and is making community and data-driven decisions about what resources to invest in is also really important. I just wanted to sort of double star that, make sure we're not forgetting about it. So, given this list of, of skills, and feel free to shout out any more if you, if you have them, I think we should talk about sort of the educational experience requirements we're asking for. And my, my perspective is, I'm interested in experience with any of these. But of course, the more experience with these things, the better chance they have of handling them well in the future. I also think that many of these are learned at school, especially things like keeping collections up to date and making decisions based on data.
Well, also, I think in those educational requirements, having, I mean, I know experience is as valuable as an advanced degree if you have the right knowledge bearings. But that degree that's current and up to date is in line with the, you know, with the modern professions of how a library is. It's not old dusty magazines and magazine anymore, it's more tech. And someone coming out or someone who has that experience with a more recent degree, you know what I'm saying? Or someone who has experience plus a degree will have that information because it's library information sciences, it's not library science anymore for a reason. Social media and being savvy with those kind of things, because that's, that is just the nature of the world with social media. It's the platform for getting the word out and sharing this information about various things like the library events, projects, and requests, you know, like what are you looking for, that kind of thing. I think that, I feel like that's important.
Do you feel like it is a... What kind of priority would you place on it? Is it an absolute requirement that they have completed every class?
No, not every class, but just be savvy with modern, you know, with social media and these other informational resources that we have that aren't necessarily in a book on a shelf or, you know, in a magazine or not, if that, you know what I mean, if that makes sense?
Yeah, so I think, if I could reframe what you're saying, it sounds like the, the understanding and being able to, having a certain comfort with technology is critical.
And where it's going, because, you know, for instance, just because we don't have it doesn't mean people aren't looking for it. You know, audiobooks, the books on CD, aren't necessarily the best platform anymore because most people don't have CD players anymore. Like, there's, there's a fantastic collection of children's audiobooks that I never could use because they were cassette tapes, which we then did buy a cassette player because I, it's like, wait a minute, we can't listen to these. But those kind of things, you know, it's not just about what the resource is, but how it's accessed, accessibility. So things like Overdrive is a fantastic resource, or some other resources out there that other libraries have, very tiny libraries that are, that we don't have or that no one even really knows about, like Libby, that Libby app is phenomenal. Yeah. So, those kind of things.
Okay. So, if we feel like our candidate meets these requirements, it doesn't sound like we need to be excessively strict about number of years of experience or degree net. It's more, and I think this is true for probably all jobs, it's more about the skills, comfort, and so on that they have.
And I'd like to see continuing professional development. I know we're, we're pretty good when we have one conference a year or two that they go, but definitely keeping up on what's going on in the industry and what's working for communities, what's not working for communities, what's working for communities like ours, what isn't. You know, we're looking at those kinds of, being up to date on those kinds of things.
So, um... Cool. Before we move on to what we are able to do in terms of compensation for the future library director, I do wanna just let everyone know that the, the candidate we all have in mind does meet pretty much all of these requirements with the sort of exception of managing people at a high level. So it's just something to keep in mind as we move forward.
But what do we mean high level? High level as in, you know, fifty people or ten, you know what I mean? What is, what would you consider high level? I mean, a corporation of forty thousand is pretty high level, but, you know, a small firm like I had, you know, that I worked with, was ten.
Well, I...
It was different, it's more personal.
Yeah. I think when we're talking about what we'd like to see in terms of people management, we're talking about somebody who has experience managing the number of people they've managed here, which is unlikely to ever be more than, than ten during their tenure.
Can I, like, I, I wasn't in any of the previous searches, but I'm wondering about past directors that we have, and whether they come in with those same qualifications. I'm, I'm assuming no.
No.
Yeah.
So, just... Yeah, no, no.
To...
Yeah, that's a good question, yeah.
You know, set a standard as far as...
Probably none of them have.
Yeah, and I think...
So it's not, so we're not...
Although it would be desirable. Obviously, you want to, like, have the perfect candidate. You know, we have limitations and it's, we...
However, I would argue, the perfect candidate isn't necessarily gonna be somebody who has managed fifty-plus, hundred-plus people. Because that's a different kind of, of, you know, management and... Completely different. So this is, you know, I don't think it has to be so hard-nosed to be...
I would put out there too that, you know, that is a thing after, you know, is there a possibility of maybe getting some sort of support as far as, you know, we have supervisor training.
Coaching.
Yeah, yeah, something like that. I, I'm not sure, you know, what, what is out there, what it would cost or whatever, but...
Yeah.
I think that there probably could be ways of getting around it. Or not getting around it, making it work.
I agree. So I just wanted to toss that out there as we move forward, because I think it's sort of a good, a good way of questioning whether this is a realistic list of requirements and expectations. I think that it, it covers pretty much what I think are the most important things for us to be looking at. And it does seem like we at least have gotten candidates who have met most or all of those requirements. All right, let's move on to compensation. Right now, the, the salary is just over forty-one thousand plus health insurance. And that is, that is low for the industry, like, less than half of what many people in this industry are getting routinely paid in towns near us. So, but we were able this year with the new budget to include covering health insurance for our director rather than sort of having it as like a standby, I hope they never need this because we're really gonna have to rearrange our budget, kind of thing. I also think that what we are able to provide in terms of money is unlikely to substantially change anytime soon, right? We've already passed the budget for next year, and for all the reasons Joy mentioned earlier, we, we don't wanna bank on any additional money coming in anytime soon. As well, yeah.
The industry standard, those industry standards are listed with specific minimum educational tags behind it. So it needs to be at least that, the rest of it's negotiable, I think. Like, it has to be negotiated up or down depending on experience. And then also, the size of library, I think, makes a significant...
Absolutely.
Business of a factor on that. And then secondly, as far as compensation type, like, I know we're talking about compensation, but this is a part of the salary.
Right.
I know, because this has happened in the past. If we don't take the health insurance, then there's a request for increased compensation in other places. And I get that. However, if we make it dollars-to-dollars match and that person changes their mind and needs insurance, because that's happened too, now their salary is higher, you know what I mean? We'd have to like, do we take back or, you know? And those are things that need to be clarified. Those are things that need to be clarified, if that makes sense.
I agree. I, I think that that should be clear as we, as we move forward. Yeah, so I, again, like I, I don't think money is where we can be very flexible here. There's not gonna be a whole lot more coming in and, and we've sort of budgeted out based on a certain expectation. If health insurance isn't taken, we can discuss what to do with that money. But from where I'm sitting, there's just not a whole lot of room in terms of offering more in that category of compensation.
Agreed, I'm with you on that.
Okay.
Great, great. I'm not saying that we are meeting industry standard by any means, that is not gonna happen.
Yeah, I, I don't, and I think that um
Even if we could, I would debate that the size of the library and, and the budget and the community to have would bring it down lower anyway.
I think so. Um, so I, I think that it's a low salary, but again, what we can offer, right? Um, so then we can get into things like time, the number of hours per week that we're expecting somebody to be here, um, the number of paid time, the amount of paid time off and so on. So, um
Okay, can I start with time schedules? Because I started saying that before and I didn't mean to jump into
Go for it.
All right, so first time scheduled, um I realized that there should be one evening a week, though they are usually, director hasn't passed them like here Tuesday evenings when we have board meeting, but it'd be nice if it was every week. Also, one weekend or at least a presence on those library events that are on the weekends. Yeah, I feel like that presence at a library event is important, just the director
Mm.
um, should be there for that. And then as far as time scheduled, I know we have, we have the two-person on policy, which I don't disagree with.
Yeah.
That's for safety reasons and, um, but maybe we should consider I know this is a different subject, but it actually, it, it correct, you know, it goes along with this, of another part-time per diem floater. Because time's not, it's time's not getting covered because the director is here for say, a program kickoff and then can't be there Monday, you know, to offset the cost of those hours, then that leaves us short on Monday.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know what I mean? So it's a separate, it's another subject, but it goes along, it kind of like it tags along with this a little bit, that, those thoughts.
Yeah, it's definitely worth considering that the more flexible we allow the director to be in the time and the more sort of uh maybe outside of normal work scheduled hours we're asking for may cost us in other ways.
But I don't want the time to be too flexible, that's been taken advantage of in the past.
Okay.
So I feel like this director should have a schedule
Mm-hmm.
that we all know about, and then it's, you know, time off should be approved by somebody.
Yeah.
And I, I, I've never, I've never sat well like that, but like, and accountability for the, the hours that director's working. So if the director's supposed to work thirty-two hours a week, I wanna see on those timesheets that they've worked thirty-two hours a week. And if they haven't, then that time is stopped from their personal time off.
If I can understand, um, it does state in the Google Docs employee handbook that they are, the director is responsible for letting us know about an education or sick leave.
Which they've done, yeah.
Whoever
Which they've done, and that's fine, but then, but there's no, is there tracking of how many hours they've taken off? So that, that, this, that leads into the benefits of compensation, because if you have two weeks off, is that fourteen days? Is that five, you know, ten business days? If you work thirty-two hours a week, then is that, you know, by hour instead of, yeah, because it's not really eight-hour days. So it would be by hour, do you know what I mean?
Right.
We have to clarify that because that, if you don't, I mean, that can really be
Mm-hmm.
That kind of information that's really vague, we interpreted many different ways and then no one's, you know, no one's on the same page.
Yeah.
Just that makes sense.
Yeah.
So we have to, I just felt like one of my dissents to the contract was it was just so vague.
Yes.
Extremely vague, that things were being asked and I'm like, wait a minute, wait a minute, this, this is not specific enough to our expectations and, and, you know, any, any contract, when you're signing the contract, their expectations.
Right.
And um I would like to see that more concrete versus kind of past practice, how it's been kind of vague and um, I don't like it, I'll just be honest, I don't like it. I just feel like there's not enough accountability and enough, um, yeah, just that.
Yeah. Um, so I, I do feel like where we cannot be very flexible in terms of salary, time is a place where we can be flexible if we are willing to be flexible. Um, so I, I do wanna make sure that we are thinking about that critically as a, a real benefit that we can offer that other libraries can't necessarily offer. Um, I think that requesting certain times in terms of evenings and events is is a reasonable thing to try to build into a weekly schedule.
And they're not like so frequent, you know, they generally tend to be seasonal.
Yeah.
So that's, I don't think that's an unreasonable expectation to ask once a quarter, that you have, you know, something that you're expected to be at that's off your usual
Well, and I also think that, that it is the kind of thing that is um a, another good way to make sure that the librarian is in touch with their, the community.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Um, so and I know that, that my perspective on this is very uh millennial, so to speak, um, in terms of looking at a salary as a um, a year-long out, a year-long payday. So I, I feel like it's very difficult for me to say I need to see you here this number of hours because in my mind, if that's not enough to get the job done, you shouldn't get to leave.
Yeah.
Just as much as if you're done early.
No, I agree, because I work, I work contract work for that very reason, right? And if I can get it done in two hours, I'm getting paid for six, you know, right? But it's a community position and that presence of the director being there is just as important
Right.
As getting stuff done, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I feel like that it is. And maybe it's an issue of having the director certain responsibilities the director has that actually actively and directly engages the public.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know what I mean? Versus always just behind the scenes.
Yeah. Well, and I think that to a certain degree, we're, we're asking for a lot from a director.
No, I agree, I agree, I know, I know, I know.
So if they have to
As for like bringing the salary down, I know, I know.
Yeah. Um, so, so the more we have, we ask them to do, the, the better chance something has of getting dropped or them not being able to um, you know, be out front and checking out books.
Right, right.
Um, so I think thirty-two hours is a number that has come up before. Is that something let's, let's start the negotiations with thirty-two.
It's, I'm, I'm, so I'm, I'm a little confused. Is, it's supposed to be thirty-five? Is that what, that's what the ad says and
Thirty-five for insurance, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thirty-five.
Because are there ramifications, like, oh, I guess that's a discrepancy.
So we can do whatever we want, I mean. Yeah, I, I think we can, so we are not bound by any town policies or regulations in terms of what we offer. Um, I think that we have said that we do not offer health insurance to part-time employees and part-time for us was anything under thirty-five.
This is what I'm wondering if we're going into a great area, because are there employees I don't know, the hours of the rest of the staff are?
They tend to be around twenty, but I'm not
Okay.
I would need to go do
So it's not like they are bumping up, I'm concerned if they're bumping up to the thirty-two and
Yeah, that's
Someone's getting benefits and someone else isn't.
Yeah, I understand.
Well, yes, but it wouldn't be, there's, there's not enough staff that like everybody's on like thirty-two hours, because we just
Oh, what do you mean, there's more than
Yeah, yeah. I'm looking, hang on.
I just don't wanna get ourselves caught in it.
Now, we could also I mean so there are fifty-two days in a year, right? So, um, of course, my math brain is like, oh, well, then you could sit and state that the hour requirement is forty hours a week, but give them fifty-two days off a year and then you're back at thirty-two.
Well, I actually calculated thirty-five hours, that's fifty-two weeks, and it's one thousand six hundred sixty-four hours.
Okay.
Without holidays taken out of there.
Right.
Which would be the, right, we're ten holidays still we have.
Mm-hmm. So at that point, we're talking yeah. Um okay, so I think, um I, I don't think thirty-two is usually, it, it's definitely between part-time and full-time.
Mm-hmm.
Um but I, I don't think it's legally part-time, although we should probably double-check on that. If it is legally part-time, does that mean we would want to raise it to thirty-five?
I thought that we talked about, I thought if we were raising to thirty-five, we talked about that, I mean, months ago, before
Well, that was
Yeah, yeah.
That was part of our negotiations with Chrissy to get
Right.
um, health insurance. But I don't know, like she came to us saying that if she was at thirty-five, she would qualify for that.
Oh, so you mean like leaving it at thirty-two, so then that's not on the table, the insurance?
Not what I was thinking.
Oh, okay. No, I'm just, I was confused, that's all.
Well, I just, I don't know where she got the thirty-five number from. And so I would want to investigate that before determining whether that distinction even really matters.
Okay.
It seems like an odd number to me because um hours are usually calculated in groups of eight or four.
Right.
Um, yeah.
Could I
Absolutely.
Can you check, um, and if it's not a union position, then the, first, your personnel policy, you should address in whatever your personnel policy says is what it is.
Right.
Because, yeah, we're not found, are you, right, we're not found by union, that's why I'm in China.
Right, so it doesn't matter first, but I guess I was just wondering, since we don't offer benefits to the rest of the staff because they're
Part-time, yeah.
Is there a likelihood that anyone could be bumping up close to that thirty, thirty-two hours?
There is.
Yes, and then
Yeah.
You really should offer them benefits too.
Yeah.
Because there's no
Yeah, and I do know that the default for the town, if something is not in the contract, is to defer to the union contract.
Yes.
So if we do have, make a change like that, we would want to make sure it's explicitly stated in the personnel policy.
Right, but we are separate, I mean, we can I guess I wasn't with the impression that the director was part, a town employee and part of the union, but that's not the case, they're, they're uh, we are separate, a separate entity.
In terms of hiring
Yes, yes, yes.
We are a separate entity and we can do what we want. I understand the conversation.
Yes, yes, we know it.
Um, okay. Heather, I saw you doing some math.
So we have on the director's, those staff hours, this is the last one, thirty-five hours, for my director, thirty and a half.
Okay.
Assistant, the um, assistant is twenty-three, assistant one, page twelve and a half, and seventeen and a half respectively.
Okay, so
And custodian, nine.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, thirty-point-five hours is getting very close to thirty-two if that's where we decide to put it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so that's something we should also consider.
Well, she was requesting thirty-two hours.
Yes.
We advertised for thirty-five, okay.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that's where that number came.
Okay. So, but maybe I mean, there ain't no way we can
I, I think
Not with me, not, I don't wanna be underhanded, but
Is she requesting thirty-two because she doesn't need the insurance, so then trying to
Or she is both requesting thirty-two and does not need the insurance. Um, the, the particular person we're talking about, um, I feel like it's important to in, in our search to offer health insurance, um, and in that case, that our director should be considered full-time.
But regardless of insurance or not, we posted thirty-five hours.
Yes.
And you come back with thirty-two request with an increased request of all the benefits.
Right.
You just don't
They, they just sit right with them.
Or, sorry. Right, wait. I know we can counter, but I'm just saying, that's
Yeah, so, so I think before we get in, into countering, I, I wanna sort of have a, a sense of like where our limits are and what we're sort of expecting, because I, I think, I, I agree that we expect a certain degree of presence um, just to, to do the job well and to do it right. And I, I think that the question of thirty-two versus thirty-five probably doesn't get too far into that question of whether they're present enough. So instead, let's talk about uh paid time off.
Okay.
Um, in the past, we've offered, uh, I believe, two weeks vacation or personal time and one week of sick leave.
Right.
With the ability to roll that up at the end of the year.
Roll how much off?
A lot.
Thirty-two hours, that's the number?
Mm-hmm. So
I yeah.
Which I don't know, hopefully it's that number coming from
Yeah.
I hope it's recent one, all right, I will be clear why I'm not a fan of that, so
Have some help, Chris.
Yes, because you could easily have someone rack up unused time and then be like, I'm done, and then they cash out.
Yeah.
And that's a lot, that can add up to quite a bit for a small town library budget. And I feel like this is what, this is the time off that you knew you were getting, um, use it or lose it, I don't know. I, I know that sounds crass, but
Yeah, I mean, I, I think
I think banking it, because it's, there's F M L A for a reason.
Yeah.
So if, um, you know, things happen in life, um, I've had to use F M L A, you know, it happens, you know, you hold your job, but I don't feel like banking time in case, you know, of sickness or, or banking it because, oh, I wanna cash it out later, I don't think that's um, I don't like it, I just don't like it.
Doesn't encourage you to
It doesn't
If you're sick, you know, and
Right, if you're sick, right, if you're sick, then you're not gonna use it, come to work, you know, um
I mean, there are, there are places that let you bank some of it, but you, well, I mean
So
You can only cash out like a percentage.
Right, you can only cash out, however, I, I've, two weeks, two weeks of vacation slash PTO plus one week sick, how many days is that earned a year? So first of all, what are two weeks? Is it ten days? If the library, if the library, the director's here five days a week, then that would be five days, ten days.
Mm-hmm.
Um, plus a week of sick. You know, what if you personal time, what if you leave for half a day, you gotta keep track of those half.
I think it's easier to just do it by hours and
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, you know, you work thirty-two hours a week, so
You get thirty, you know, you get seventy hours a year.
Yeah, yeah, and then you just
And then
And then if you take Yeah, yeah, and then you just, and then if you take, you come in.
Thirty-five of sick, um. But some thing needs to keep track of that, an hour here, an hour there, leaving early or. I know we have, you know, in the past, we've had it, people have to leave early or there's a snow day, they can make it up elsewhere, that's fine. But it needs to be tracked. That, it's just that stuff in the past, I just, I've never seen where those hours are kept tracked of, track of, to know that it's all adding up correctly, do you know what I mean?
So we now have an hour tracking system, we could have the director use it and submit everybody's hours to us that are.
Including the directors.
Including the directors. Right, and then.
And then, so is there, is there in that system, a tally that, you know, ticks off, okay, you took, you know, three hours of P T O on this day and that comes off the, the tally for the year?
I do not know.
I would, I would expect it was.
I would expect it to do that because.
Yeah.
I mean, even if it doesn't, what, what can, what can we do? We need to track this, right?
We need to track it, even if it doesn't, somehow it needs to be tracked so that, you know, in the end, it's not getting of, of use. And yes, I wanna believe people are inherently good and the honor system is great, however, in the past, I've come to the library and directors weren't here when they were supposed to be here. And I don't know if that was tracked, you know, three hours here, an hour there, um, still getting paid, but not, you know.
Yeah.
No, I think we all agree.
Goes to a larger issue though, um, which we could probably address later, but.
Does the tracker do any work?
That's what I mean, so, yeah, and I have, that's.
Probably got a good, um.
As treasurer, it's my first, and it, I did not sit in while with you.
Mm-hmm.
Not the X T B U, but I'm staying.
But I think that is something probably to be looked into at a later.
Yeah. But it'll go along, but as far as time off and things like that, tracking by hours, and I, I'm not, uh, what do you think of, what do you think about rollover time?
We don't roll it over.
I don't, I've never, I never really had a rollover.
The worst, worst small company rollover, they couldn't afford.
Yeah, we were two weeks.
They get two weeks and what they do is, um, we have some, one employee who uses it all, all at one shot, and then we have other employees that, his dad was sick, so he took some there, he takes some out here, he takes some out over there when his, when his wife came home from the hospital, you know, just.
Yeah.
But we don't roll it over.
Yeah, I mean, I've never worked for, I mean, I've worked for a very large global corporation, I've worked for most of my time as a small business, and the small business never rolled over, you just can't afford to pay that kind of.
They don't use it, they pay them for it at the end of the year.
Yeah.
If they don't use it, well, we don't roll it over.
Yeah, yeah, we don't.
So they don't lose it, but.
Yeah, that's what they've done that work, they, they'll, you're talking ten or fifteen days, not five years of accumulated.
Yeah.
That's.
That's a little excessive.
And it's frankly, budget-wise, it kinda messes things up, you know, it's way the budget every year, that was eight dollars in case someone cashes out a huge rollover, we can't stand it.
Yeah, I, I agree that rolling hours over is really tricky, we probably shouldn't do it.
They need something, someone to also oversee that.
Yeah. Okay, so do we, does anybody object to no rollover?
Well, isn't the policy right now?
Yeah.
So I think we're gonna have to change, change the policy.
Okay. Okay. Um.
I don't know. Can we make a motion to do that now or should we, I mean, I feel like we.
So with, just devil's advocate, so if we are rewriting the policy for no rollover, if someone doesn't use their time, it should be, they should be compensated for that at the end of the year.
But there's no one in that scenario right now, that's why I'm saying we should do it now.
Yeah, no, but I mean, we'll say, yeah.
Right.
But if we're not gonna have a no rollover policy, if someone doesn't use two days as part of their contract or their benefit package, then you just, they pay it out for it, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah. Right, but who would that apply to?
Just the director right now.
The director.
Yeah. Which there is one, but, I mean, there is one, so we don't have.
Who are we supposed to?
Yeah, that contract has to be heard, it's just.
Right, right, we have to do it, we have to do it before you get in the director so that they won't have anything to do with it, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. And then, um, well, I'll say this for next steps, just I had a question about. Well, no, this goes along with the, um, time off, um, probation.
Mm-hmm.
So during probation, are they earning days of time, so are, are they earning days, so like most, you know, places, you're earning like a day or half a day a month.
No, they don't, according to the policy, they don't earn it after the.
They shouldn't be earning to, yeah, they shouldn't be until after, that's why, I wanted that to be clear, and that should be in the contract, those things.
Yeah. Yeah.
Like how long the probationary period is and when those benefits could, is it, okay.
It's, it's. Mm-hmm. If you, um, if it's the middle of the year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When your probationary period ends, then that remainder of the year is prorated.
Right.
For whatever's, and then you start in the following year.
Right. Alright, just as long as that's clear.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
It's clear.
Time, yeah, it's clearing time and that time during probationary period.
Yeah, and I think if maybe during that probationary period, it can be approved and then taken out of the prorated whatever.
Right, right.
After, but it would probably just have.
It would already be budgeted for anyway, it's just.
Yeah. So, um. We're offering what amounts to, what, like three weeks P T O? Some that you have to ask in advance, some that you take off at that time, right? Um.
Yeah, vacation, those kinda things should be asked out in advance, especially if, um, if they're taking two weeks off and consecutively. Those kinda things, absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, and. Yeah.
I, I, two weeks of vacation.
Flash personal time, like general personal time, those, those are, I think, some of that, right? I mean, that's, that's because it all time off and it's not a busy.
Cause it was like nine half-days of sick time.
Okay.
Nine half-days of sick time.
Nine half-days. Which. So I guess I would say sixteen, you know, we'd do that on an hourly basis.
I mean, but were those, are each of those half-days like her birthday?
What's the, right, so that's why it should be an hour, like however many hours that works out to six, two days.
Because.
So, yeah.
So it was the, the, for the sick time, it was nine half-days, is that what it was written?
Yes. And I can't remember what the, um, personal time was.
Three half-days.
Three half-days.
Sorry, I'm just like.
Half.
Three half-days of P T O.
Mm-hmm.
And. Nine half-days sick time.
Right, so I think we should convert those to hours.
I would convert it to hours and then, I don't know, I, I. So if it's hours, why not have the flexibility, only because I'm coming from experiences, how it was where I was. You get, we got ten days a year, we can use those however we want, vacation, personal, sick time.
Yeah.
Those are ten, ten paid days, if you go beyond that, you don't get paid, you know, but, um. Instead of labeling it, okay, this is sick time, this is, then you have the flexibility, use it the way you want to.
I, yeah, I don't see any real benefit to us in distinguishing between flavors of time off.
I mean, it's still time off, it's still paid time off. So if you have at the end of the year and you have your nine, and not at the end of the year, but you have these sick days, you weren't sick, you still have, you know, time off, you can use it.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's how it was in the, it was, it was a small firm, there were ten of us and we had ten paid days a year
Mm-hmm.
to use however we wanted, personal time, you know, split it half a day here or a week or, you know, I'm really sick, I don't feel like coming in today, and you're getting paid.
Yep. Um, so I think we might be able to go up to four weeks of P T O. I, I don't like the idea of going much beyond that because at that point, you're, you're looking at the year as a whole and it's like a twelfth of the year.
Right, yeah.
You know?
So four weeks, that's including everything, right, sick order, isn't that?
Yeah.
That's what she was asking for, I thought.
I believe she's asking for five, but maybe I got that wrong.
Oh, she's asking for five, I'm sorry, yes, yeah. Okay, so we're bumping the hours up to thirty-five hours, we're giving her one week of personal time, one week of sick time and two weeks of vacation.
Yeah, well, I'm just calling it four weeks P T O, however you decide to use it is.
Um, one interjection, when we are going, if we need to change, make a motion to change the, um, policy, we would need to also change the policy for vacation because it says, employees with benefits will earn a paid vacation after successful completion of the six-one probationary period. This vacation is earned on a prorated monthly basis of eight point eight-three days per month. And they wouldn't be earning anything because we're giving them two weeks, so those have to be changed.
Point eight-three days per month are?
Yeah.
Is this it?
I.
Really high.
Um.
Oh, point eight-three, sorry.
Point eight-three, no, point eight-three, so it's not even quite a day, per month.
I was just eight-eight point eight. Yeah.
Um, yeah, so if, if we were doing four weeks, then yeah, that would be more than point eight-three days per month. Yeah, so I, I think that at our next, at your next meeting, it probably makes sense to formally go through and, and change all those policies to be in line with what we decide to offer.
Change something.
So we have to figure the, yeah, earned month rate to put in there.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, right, you could, there's a few ways you could do it, I mean, you could pro, because I'm just thinking of for the future direct, a, a possible future director, like say this one works thirty-two, but the next one works thirty-five, you could just do it on a forty-day work week, prorated to, you know, just figure out the hours. That term, I'll, I'll think about that.
Okay. Yeah, cause I, I think. Yeah, I think we'd wanna look at it hourly and if they change the number of hours they, they work per week, we would also have to change.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Right, yeah.
So we take it as a percentage of the forty, then if the number of hours that we work changes. That would change in line with it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Think, think about it.
Well, that will be for next meeting, so.
Yeah, do, do some math and get back to us.
I will.
Um. Okay. Do we all agree that that seems like a fair, but, uh, something we're comfortable with in terms of a package?
So she's not taking insurance?
Yeah, we can discuss that next if, if you'd like.
Okay.
I feel like, well, I guess you've already addressed it, is we don't have much to offer in the way of salary and so if we can make it a bit more attractive by offering some time off.
I think, I have to, because, so, I'm thinking dollars to dollars, if we aren't paying for insurance and giving another week of time off, we're actually ahead of the game.
Oh, by far.
By far.
Yeah.
I think it's saving us money.
Yeah.
However, it goes back to the other thing that I would have to look to as far as coverage, you know, maybe in the future. But even then, if I have a team, I'll do a numbers estimates, we still be ahead, we're still ahead.
You're, we're still ahead. We're still ahead.
We're still ahead, we're still saving money.
I like.
And I'm not trying to be cheeky, I'm just saying we have to look at the big picture.
Can avoid do that.
Yes.
Yeah, and that way, there's a, if we have a clear expectation of if you do say you need insurance later on, there is something that you're exchanging that's clear to everybody, that does seem like a better way to go about doing that.
Just doing math, that's all.
Um. Yeah, I think, uh, that seems like a, a trade in which we come ahead.
Uh, so you're saying in this contract we give, are we going to have that stipulation that we're doing this?
And it's not gonna track us anymore.
Because you're not taking insurance, I mean, is there gonna be something?
It would be like you are expected to work thirty-five hours per week, you get four weeks P T O.
It's just a simple counteroffer, like what she's setting out, yeah.
Yeah, if you, right, if you choose to forego insurance, you get an extra week. If you take insurance, this is the baseline.
Right, cause I didn't want to get caught offering this and then.
Oh, oh, just kidding, I need insurance to get like.
It's a salary, it's a salary job, so.
Does.
Yes, but it's a trade-off. That's what I mean, that's what I mean, so.
I thought the town compensated her if she didn't take the insurance.
It's like five to six hundred dollars.
Oh. Yes, it's, it's not enough to really.
Not much.
That's, but to get the, the check, you get a reimbursement check in June and, um, I, the two previous directors had that check and then, um, top job, it gets like five or six hundred, I think. I think if I, even if it was twice a year, it's still only twelve hundred.
Yeah.
So it's a lot less than if.
And it costs to.
Six, seven grand of insurance.
Yeah. And insurance is going out too.
Yeah, well.
Very expensive. Okay.
Three weeks paid time off, salary. And.
Thirty-five hours a week.
Thirty-five hours a week and an extra one week of paid time off in the way of insurance, so.
Yeah.
So the four weeks or what?
I think four.
I was thinking four or four.
So if she doesn't take the insurance, she gets five weeks of.
No.
No, 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 no.
Three weeks.
She doesn't, yeah, no, no, it's only seven, yeah.
Got it.
Um, and those are by hour, we'll have to figure that out.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
One hundred and five hours a week, one hundred and five hours of P T O, whatever way.
For the director, George, forty hours a week.
Oh.
The standard is usually thirty-five.
I think the standard was thirty-two or less and then Chrissy bumped it up to thirty-five.
Oh, okay, and you wouldn't have overtime, well, there wouldn't be because it's salary, but you know, if you're working on a Saturday, then equal hours on Monday or whatever, you know, a day that's not gonna disrupt
Mm-hmm.
operation.
Okay.
I guess she'd be working roughly one thousand five hundred sixty hours a year.
Yes.
Not counting holidays.
Right, cause then there's that too, we have that now, the holidays are in there too, does she know that? The dates, the, yeah, cause that's also.
I can, I have ten holidays in there, so whatever.
Does she know that?
I don't know.
That's what I mean, that's in there too, so it's not like, and everybody.
So that's like an extra two weeks.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I think that's, that's worth including in the offer letter.
I think it is. Yeah.
So we can state which ones they are.
Yeah, I think. Okay, this seems like a package. Um, any other discussion on compensation? I know a bunch of people need to leave, like write something down.
Um, yeah, and always, alright, if, if someone had something in place, they're keeping track of.
Yeah.
Of ticking off when paid, when paid time off is used.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that doesn't have to be included in the letter, it just must.
Is it? Yeah, no, no, I know, is it fair to stipulate that you can't take all that time off consecutively or no?
Um.
I don't know, I don't know, if you're not physically.
So.
I think.
I know.
When she wants time off because.
Or just. Because if you took it all off consecutively, that's, that's a lot here, you know, that's more child than you.
I mean, I think that the, the rule of thumb I've heard people use is that for every day you're taking off, you should give your employer a week of notice.
Okay.
So if you choose to take
Okay.
all of it off.
Yeah, you're planning, then you need, yeah.
Then you would need
And coverage.
Something like several years' notice.
What they.
Or, or six months notice or something.
Right, well, I'm thinking about timed off, time off that I would like. Um, I don't know, I can enforce it, because it's not like we, I guess consequential, the director's in charge of getting their own coverage, like, when, with a two-person policy.
Yes.
Um, using the board as a pool, a staffing pool, absolutely not, never again.
No.
Um, I, I understand that there were situations in the past where, you know, when the staff's family, and it kind of was just like this, you know, maelstrom of people needed time off, and that was fine, I get it, we were all there for it, but then it kind of became, I have it.
Yeah.
And I'm not okay with that, you know, that's not all.
Not okay with.
Unless you want to pay me, unless you want to pay me for, yeah, unless you want to pay me for my time, I don't know.
Pay more for me. Yeah.
But I'm saying that's, that's not something to do, and that's something that, you know, that I want the director to be responsible for that. With that said, if someone needs time off, other staff, and the director can't find coverage, I feel like the, the director is then in charge of covering those hours.
Yeah.
That's what a supervisor does, we've all been there, you know, if you can't find coverage for that person, then you're, you're it. I feel like that's a standard that should be there. Is that cruel and unusual punishment or?
No, because where else would you get help from?
Yeah.
Besides looking at us, I mean, I'm not gonna give up a Saturday and I could pay for it, it certainly means me.
I mean, I know, I know that like. Yeah, I, I think if you can find somebody, like, I, I know Jenna, for instance, has said that if we, if we needed coverage, she'd be, and she's free, she'd be willing to come in and cover for that time. Now, I don't know, it seemed like she would expect to be paid, which makes total sense.
Well, yeah, you should, and that's why I brought up having someone who's a floater or something, someone who doesn't want necessarily, and every, you know, steady hours, but is there to float and then be compensated for it, that's, it would be awesome to have that, um, pool.
So I think we're getting a little far astray with our agenda, but.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, I just wanted to stress, I feel that should be as part of.
Yeah, the expectations.
The director, yeah, the expectation.
That you've found coverage for all hours.
Because that has fallen by the wayside in the past.
Yeah.
And I just feel like if we set those ground rules and expectations from day one, then we're good.
All right, so in terms of next steps, I think we can draft the letter. Um. I know we've, we've discussed the candidate before, um. Do, do, do we wanna put off and continue that discussion, or are we comfortable with our decision?
Well, I mean, technically, the position still advertises, and, and there's no one else, you know, I mean, there's, there's, um.
Yes.
I know the last I've been to is twice with hiring, and in the past, we've had like a bigger pool of applicants, however, generally, those are just people putting feelers out and trying to get their feet wet in that application process, and, um, when it came down to actual interviews, and when we, the pool was significantly smaller than what was applied, because people were just like, no, sorry, not interested. Either, it's not necessarily always a pay, it's just, you know, we had applicants applying from across the country the last two times, and it's like, why would they be, but they're, I get it, it's the process and the practice. So I don't know how much more hopeful we can be, um.
I mean, that's my concern too, is that, um, when I think about all the past directors we've had, this candidate is not that far out of line.
Yeah.
So I feel like this is the pool. She's representative of the general pool of, um, given what we can offer.
And what we can expect.
Well, but what we can offer for benefits and compensation is not out of line, so we have this, and, but, I, you know, don't want to settle for just taking someone, I feel like she would be a good candidate. Is she perfect? No. There are, um. There's room for growth.
Yeah.
Um, I, I have an expectation that she could probably fulfill the role, that she could fill the role. I don't know, so that's where I kind of feel.
We're not gonna get a perfect victim, that, you know, if we had all the money in the world to throw at like the most exceptional.
Yeah.
NLS person out there, because you've gotta have, um, growing pains, for sure. And it's just how those growing pains are met is what, is, is what we need to work through.
Yeah. I wouldn't have proposed the decision we made if I wasn't comfortable with it. So, so that's sort of, I, I am still comfortable with it, but.
The part that I'm concerned with is just the managerial part, because like I said, I didn't see it in her cover letter when we requested it, and I didn't see very much of it in her resume, so. But you bringing up the part that there could be coaching or classes out there that, that we could help her with.
I mean, we've had our previous directors had no managerial skeleton.
They really didn't.
Yeah.
Than just a handful, you know, four people. And. You can't expect more than that, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But offering support, I think, is a good idea. I'm all for professional development, it can make all the difference, just.
Yeah.
You know, because sometimes you just don't know, and if you just, and if there's a little support in that way, someone can really blossom.
Yeah. We, I do need to make sure I tell you about something we need to add to the next agenda of professional development.
Okay. Just before we get. And there is maturity there, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
Which is a positive.
Yeah, oh, yeah, definitely. All right, I think that's it, I think that's everything I wanted to say.
Um, for the sake of formalizing things, do, does somebody want to make a motion involving the specifics of what we've discussed?
I need the motion that we offer the library director's position to the candidate, that we all have in mind, um, for thirty-five hours a week, two weeks vacation, one week sick, and then if she's not getting the health insurance in addition to the five or six hundred dollars from the town, she gets another week of PTO with ten holidays, and I believe the two concessions that we want to put in there is to make sure she has, supervisor support and professional development, and that she's available for when we have library events. Flexible template maybe. Yeah, she's gotta be for an event that's from like six to eight, maybe she comes in later in the day, or something like that.
Yeah.
Right. Can we do discussion on that motion for a second? So these are the current hours for the library director as written, or nine to three, Monday through Friday, so we can have her make adjustments to where this, you know, where this one evening.
Yeah. Look, if she has to work later on a Tuesday or Thursday. A Tuesday or Thursday. Then come in earlier on, or if she has to work later, come in later on another day, of her choice, but she needs to let us know, so if we come looking for her at nine o'clock on a Wednesday, she gets two to.
These are the decided issues.
You want a permanent schedule of having her come in, um, and one B M one evening.
One evening a week.
In, yeah. Oh, okay, yeah.
Where either Tuesday or Thursday, because those are late.
The late night.
Yeah, and that's, so this schedule, say, I, this is, I bet that's just first example, say, say Tuesdays she would work. Again, I found the, the two-person policy. So it may have to be this until we work in our two-person policy, having a floater, so table that for.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't know which, what the schedule would work out, but somebody else could also change their schedule to accommodate that too.
Yeah. Yeah. I could see that, someone can, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'm, so, so it's thirty-five hours a week.
Yeah.
Two weeks. Two weeks vacation.
One week sick.
One week sick. Another extra week of PTO if she's not taking insurance. With the ten holidays.
Mm-hmm.
So after the discussion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 All right, motion passes. Any other discussion today? All right, I'm adjourning. Seven twenty-seven.